This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 on Tuesday, January 30th, 2018 in Rule 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent Schools and an non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Director. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the rule?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schlesner.
Here.
Ms. Seeling. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01 approved of the agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Move on, move on.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on any discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Efficient and effective operations, 7.01, long-range planning. This is an information I have seen.
Yes, you know, the Long Range Facility Committee started meeting last year and even into this year and looking at our facility needs into the, moving into the future. And tonight's goal is to bring up the rest of the board up to speed on the information that the three board members who are a part of that committee have been looking at and studying. Tonight, we're going to share with you that information, any information that they saw as far as our capacity of our buildings, projected enrollments, and how that impacts our facilities. I do, tonight, we're more going to look at building something in the future. But before we have that, I want to make you understand that the committee really spent some time looking at, is there other ways to address this besides just building a building? Looking, using our facilities differently, in a variety of different ways, and reached out to other districts to see what they were doing. So it isn't something that we jumped right into thinking, let's build right away. We looked at, is there other ways to address the space that we have moving forward? But tonight, we're going to share the capacity of our buildings, look a little bit about what we think we need to build in the future and when that needs to happen. I think back in 2012, when we did some boundary adjustments, we knew at that time eventually we'd have to make some adjustments. Tonight, we're going to talk briefly a little bit about some boundary adjustments. We don't have any formal suggestions for tonight. Just want to share with you some of the buildings that we're considering, based on their capacity and how we have to make some adjustments. I think on February 12th, I think it is?
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth or twelfth, we will hold a committee meeting where we'll invite pairs to come in and see our proposed boundary adjustments, get feedback from them, and then on the 20th, we will bring a recommendation to the full board on boundary adjustments, just to try to balance out our capacity a little bit and buy us a little time before we end up building something. So, and then I think we also have Don from Springstead coming later to share a little bit of information about if we do move forward and reach out to the voters, what that looks like, and then a little bit about the funding possibilities as well. So I'll turn it over at this time with John.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody. The Long Range Planning Committee started meeting December of 2015, according to my notes. Scott Sheridan and myself were the two staff members on it, and Director Becker was there, and Richard Heinz, who's no longer with the school board. The four of us started talking about building issues and planning for the future. Eventually Superintendent Munoz and Director Smith and Director Schlesner were adding to the group, and we've been meeting off and on here for the last year plus. So tonight, I just wanted to go through some information on where we're at with the capacities and enrollments, and just show you some of the background information that the committee saw, so that we can bring the rest of the board up to speed here. So if we could have that put up on the screen, I'll run through that. Of course, it works. There we go. Hopefully, we can read it. So in December of 2017, we put together kind of the final report here for the Long Range Planning Committee. We looked at the Guide to Planning Construction Projects. It's a document put together by Minnesota Department of Education that kind of guides, gives you different formulas, different rules for planning new school facilities, as far as how much space you should have, what size of acreage should you have your campuses be, so on and so forth. What we, the reason we really went back to that book is if you look through multiple documents over the years at the district, our capacity numbers have changed from year to year, depending on how we were measuring the space at that time. And it's somewhat frustrating because the number has changed every year. And might say, how does that happen when we haven't built anything since Gibbs in 2008? Well, it happens because as spaces become crunched, as we've had to take away a music room and art room and put those out on a cart, and make that former room into a first-grade classroom, kindergarten classroom, that's essentially made our capacity go up, but at the expense of having adequate spaces for other subjects. So what we decided to do is just go back to the formulas that are in writing by Department of Education and say, if we followed that, what would our capacity be? And so that's really what I'm trying to explain here, is that if we were to look at an elementary school and we were going to build brand-new, we should really be looking at providing about 125 to 155 square feet per student enrolled in a small school. And if we go to a large school, it'd be 110 to 135 square feet. And the definition of small elementary school is normally up to 500. So we have a handful of schools that are small elementary schools. And then, really, I think their definition would be maybe a medium school would be up to 1,000, but we consider that a large elementary school. We don't have any schools right now that are over 1,000. So we'll just say, small for 500, large from 500 to 1,000. So if you do that, the math shows that we could have capacity basically anywhere from 7,300 elementary students up to 9,000. That's quite a big range of numbers, but that's just how the math works out when you divide the square feet by 125 or 155. That's the range you get. I recommend to the group, how about we consider the midpoint? We don't need the most space for kid in Rochester. Maybe we don't need the least amount of space for kids in Rochester, but maybe we should just try to be in the middle. So that midpoint number is 8,150. So this is kind of how it sorts out. These are small elementary schools. Bishop, Churchill, Elton Hills, Falwell, Hoover, Lincoln, Longfellow, Pinewood, Washington. We have 3,357 students enrolled in those schools. And if you do the math, you take that middle number, we should have about 2,800 kids in those schools. So we're running at about 120 percent capacity at the smaller schools. Elton Hills obviously stands out at 150 percent enrollment to capacity. Bishop is pretty high at 144. And then we have a couple of schools that are just slightly under what the formulas set, Longfellow and Washington. You can feel free to interrupt or ask any questions. We don't need to. Go ahead.
Thank you. So does this also help us potentially consider overutilization, underutilization? And this may relate to potential boundaries, just to?
Absolutely. We're going to talk about here in a few slides where we're kind of recommending where we should try to make some boundary changes. So, all right. Our large elementary schools. So those would be Bamber Valley, Franklin, Gage, Gibbs, Jefferson, Riverside, Sunset Terrace. We have 5,147 students enrolled, and the capacity of those are about 5,350. So potentially, we're under-enrolled a little bit if you look at all of our large elementary schools combined. Now, I'll just point out, why does Jefferson have two different numbers there? The formula tells us that Jefferson could support maybe up to 750 students, but we also know that Jefferson has seven full-size classrooms that we're using for an intensive autistic spectrum disorder program. You can only have six students in those rooms. So those six rooms, if they were fifth grade, we could have 186 students enrolled. But because of the special ed program that's there, we can only have 42 total students. So that takes away about 140 slots. So just for purposes of trying to gauge where Jefferson really is, the capacity's more like 600, and so that would change that school to about 104 percent. So they're very close to where they should be right now with that programming.
If the smaller ones were on average 120 percent, if I did the math right, 120 percent on the larger, we'd have room for 640 more students.
Let's show you.
If we assume we're, we can operate at 120 percent capacity, as we are.
Sure.
The other one, if we assume the same for the large schools, we'd have room to, for 640 more students, if I did the math.
Potentially, if you want every.
If I use the 53.
If you wanted every school to be at 120.
Right. I'm not saying we do, but I'm just saying that if we can make it work with that, that's extra time, life time.
Sure thing. I think on this next one, I just put them all up together, and I said, take all of our small and our large. We have 8,504 students enrolled, capacity of 8,150. We're at 104 percent on average. Of course, we have no school, I don't think, at exactly 104 percent. So, but if we were trying to balance it all out equally, we would try to manipulate it to get them all at 104 percent.
John?
Yeah?
I don't know if this is a comment or question, but especially for those schools that are considerably over capacity, we're managing to service the number of kids we have. They're partly because we've given up music rooms and art rooms, and we're using the libraries for many other things.
Correct.
So, you know, the fact that we can, we can get them educated is something, but we're certainly not providing the kinds of space we want to have ideally for those kids.
Exactly. I think, I think that's why we give a recommendation. I mean, in an ideal world, you know, give a little bit more space for things to happen, more break-up rooms, more study areas, things like that.
But didn't you also, and I can't remember which were the schools, but there, some principals are, adapt better to, you know, fuller capacities, and other principals adapt not as well. And so, it, so kind of to your point, Gene, that yes, we are, we are students, not every student, you know, fits all the extras rooms, but some of the principals were okay with it, and other ones really were not okay with it. So while, to make this even a little bit more difficult in figuring out capacity, you know, some principals are like, no, we can, we can do, you know, I can work with more kids. And, and other principals are like, no, I have too many. And, and so it, so it's not, I mean, none of these things are cut and dry at all. You know, all these numbers that, you know, that we've talked about and, and how it plays out, there's always, I would say, there's always the human element in it. And, and how, you know, people perceive the number of students and how it works, and, you know, do they make it work? Do they try to make it work? So, I mean, it's even more complicated and gets muddier, I think, the more you think about it.
Some schools you can unmake the feeling than when you walk in.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I think that that, if I'm remembering or thinking of the situation to which you're referring, that predates my, by quite a few years, where there was one school that really wanted a lot of students and another school that didn't want so many. So I don't, I don't think that situation occurs anymore. I mean, the superintendent could certainly address that if he thinks that, you know, somehow principals are bargaining among themselves.
No, I don't, no, I don't think. No, and I don't think it's the situation we were talking about. I think it was one that was much more recent, especially when we were looking at the capacities now.
There's two buildings I know of that have basically the same floor plan, same square feet, almost the same enrollment, and one principal has a different perspective than the other as to how it feels.
Yeah. And so, and so that's, that's why, I mean, it's, there's also the human element in it and, and, you know. So I, it's just.
I think that's why we go back to M D standards.
Yeah. No, I, I know. All I'm just saying is that, you know, Director Marvin was talking about something, and I'm just adding more because all of us on the committee, I mean, the, it's, it's a complicated issue and, and, you know, some people think we're overcrowded, and some people are like, oh, no, we can, we can make do. And so, I, I mean, it's just, I'm just laying out all the information. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just putting it out there that we all, in the group, we all talked about that.
Yeah, I agree. I think there's some adults who adjust to this a little bit differently than others. But when, what I like about what John has up here is we're taking all the emotion out of, out of the discussion and looking at number of kids, how much square footage you have, and trying to keep it that way. But I agree, and there's some, we did talk about that.
Yeah.
So give me more, we'll make it work. There's some, lock the, not physically lock, but lock the door, we'll let any more in. So I think that's, that's just human nature, I guess. But what we've looked at, as a committee, is just the numbers and how much space there is, and trying to determine what our, our future needs are as far as, as we're at now. But also, as we look at our long-range enrollment projections for the next several years, what our needs going to be to accommodate as well. You know, just in the last, probably, three years, we've grown close to 1,000 kids in three years. So every year, we.
District-wide.
District-wide, yeah. And I think close to about 2,000 students since I've been here, came in 2011. And every year, you know, John makes predictions based on birth. I mean, that's really the best thing you can go by, but we, every year, we've grown more than what they've projected. And we actually talked about that in cabinet, that how can we look at our enrollment projections beyond just, you know, five years ago, how many kids were born in Omsen County and how many we normally get? And our numbers here, we look at what our growth has been over this last several years, but what we haven't factored in yet either is the impact of DMC. I don't think, as a district, we've seen that yet. And so I anticipate, not only will our, our growth continue at the same pace that it has been, but it's probably even going to go higher than what it has been.
That's, that's the one thing I think there's, since we know is that we're going to have more students. And that's a given. And at some point, you know, we reach a tipping point where we aren't thinking about this and doing the right thing, we will have problems with, in buildings that aren't having problems today, and those that are maybe, you know, viewed as, perceived as being overcrowded today will, you know, become untenable. So that's the reason I said the 6, I remember, just basically, you said, it won't take that long before we have 600 more students, who are only looking at a couple of years out before we're faced with probably the reality of having to do something. And that's the whole purpose of, you know, getting our arms around this today so that we're prepared for what's coming next.
So if I might inquire, so the M D E standard, and I'm not asking you to speak to their intent, but are those numbers reflective of a optimized learning environment space or some other, just it would be nice if each student were allocated X amount of square feet? I'm more so concerned about whether or not there's a direct correlation between overcrowding and classroom performance.
And I don't know if the document speaks to that or not. I was looking at it more from the mathematical question of trying to plan space, but that's a very good question, a very good point. Okay, I'll move on. So here's just kind of a brief summary of elementary schools. So given our range, we think it's 7,300 to 9,000, midpoint 8,150. We're currently at 8,504. Our projections show us being anywhere from 8,400 to 8,700 as we look out, you know, a generation, basically. I think those numbers are very conservatively, and I think I mentioned that here. So let's get back to that in just a second. So I'll show you the next data point we have here. Gibbs, so that's obviously the last time we built an elementary school. So where were we at around there? I kind of just wanted to see, you know, what was our tipping point back then that kind of pushed us into building a new school? Before Gibbs was opened, or when it opened, our capacity became 8,015 students. And if Gibbs was built for about 650, then we know that our capacity at that time was 7,300, 7,400, something like that. But we had an enrollment of around 7,700. So we were obviously over 100 percent at that point, deciding to build Gibbs. And when it opened, we dropped down to 96 percent capacity. So we've gone from that 96 percent up to 104 percent, kind of on average, district-wide, in the last, is that eight school years, nine school years, something like that? So we're potentially getting close to that tipping point again, where, just like when Gibbs was decided, that we might need to make a decision on that coming up. So here's just graphically how this looks. This is the last 10 school years, that's the red part of the line, kind of showing the kids go up. The solid red line going across is that 8,150 capacity line. And then if you look at the way we project enrollment, that'd be the green line forward. And you kind of look at that and say, well, that's flat. Well, that kind of goes back to what Superintendent Munoz said. We look at birth rates, and we try to say, how many kids were born, how, what percentage of those kids are going to enroll in the public schools? And then, once we get five years from now, we just hold that number flat, because there's too many unknowns between how many kids are actually going to be born, because we're projecting out 18 years, and that's a lot of babies that are here yet. So. Now, so what we tried to do then is put a blue line on there and said, well, we've been averaging growth of elementary numbers by about 115 per school year, every year, year over year. If we just keep adding 100, I just picked 100, rounded down, that's the blue line. So I think the truth is somewhere in between the green line and the blue line, that we're going to stay above capacity, we're probably going to blow away the capacity, barring anything really unforeseen in the community. So there is a point there where, you know, what number do you want to stretch to? 120 percent, 140 percent, 150 percent capacity? I don't think the public's going to tolerate just perpetual not doing anything about it. Again, that's why we're here. So now let's go into the middle school. Again, because sometimes middle schools have different programming, maybe more gym space, maybe a pool, things like that. The guidelines say you should have more square feet, so 170 to 200, and a small middle school like Friddell, or 160 to 190 square feet at a larger middle school like our other three. So if you do all the math there, the range would be somewhere between 3,100 and 3,700, and the midpoint being 3,400. So where are we at? We're at 3,600, 3,300 enrolled on a capacity of 3,400. So other than Kellogg, where we're very close to hitting that capacity number, we're over at the rest of our middle schools. Friddell, obviously, we're making an intentional choice to bring in 160 new sixth graders every year there, so I don't really see, you know, it's operating, it's fine. They don't have a pool, so they don't have some of that extra space. I think that works. So you can maybe throw that out, but the others are above 100 and projecting to be above 100. It's like this clicker is just one foot too far away.
It'll like stop soon with me.
Our projections for ranges, 3,800 to 4,000. So we don't see it declining. In fact, we've got fourth graders right now as our biggest class. They're going to move to fifth grade next fall, then they're going to push into sixth grade. So we're going to balloon, I'm sure, up into that 4,000 range pretty quickly. Again, if you look at this line, it looks a little bit flat and maybe declining a little bit. But again, I didn't factor in any of those, if you take, keep going, 100 more elementary, just picture that line kind of doing what the elementary did. There's probably a truthful number somewhere in between an upsloping line and a flat line.
John, before you move forward, so fourth graders apparently presently being the largest block of children, and knowing that their numbers are, would you say 4,000?
All middle schools, so all sixth, seventh, eighth graders, 4,000. The fourth graders are in the 14,000 range.
So when they hit middle school, the impact that they will have upon, I mean, if we were to consider nothing else in terms of additional student or district student population growth, we have to contend with the reality, two years from now, our middle schools will be.
I think they're going to be at one of the highest points we've ever seen in our middle schools in two, three, fourth year.
Yep. So those are important conversations for us to engage in as well.
So, and the reality is, I don't even know if we decided tonight to build a new middle school, if that would even affect those fourth graders. We might just have to know in our minds, we're going to be dealing with very full middle schools in the next couple of years.
So what about the third graders after? So, sorry, so are the fourth graders, is it a bubble?
It's a little, I mean, it's the highest number, but it's not like hundreds more than the third grade class behind it. It might be 60, 80 more than the third grade class behind it, so.
That's if no block come in.
That's correct.
All grades are growing.
Correct.
It's just the fourth grade is an exceptional year for.
That was a happy, happy year for a long-term.
Exceptional year for people who are active, I guess, we're active.
Moving on to high schools.
Yeah.
Quickly. Put a slide up. Again, 170 to 190 square feet per student, so we have a range of 5,300 to 5,900 capacity at our three large high schools, plus the alternative living, alternative learning center. And then that's how it sorts out. So we've got 5,254 enrolled on a capacity of 5,850.
Now, John, excuse me for, but you had mentioned earlier that Friddell, in the absence of having a swimming pool, so our swimming pool's factored into the total?
Yes. Okay. So, yeah, obviously, we know Century does not have one, so that's, can make that a little smaller. We don't count the National Volleyball Center as part of our square feet, so that's separated off.
It's definitely city.
It is city property.
John, question about the ALC. I mean, 148 percent's a lot. Does that take into account that not all of those students are there at the same time?
No, it does not. And that's a perfect segue into, like, some of the things the group studied, the committee, that, you know, that ALC model of having 12 or 14 periods, whatever they have, is potentially an option we could apply to our other schools someday as they hit that 100, 110, 120 percent to kind of, you know, make it work without having to build a fourth high school. All right? Now, interesting, as these fourth graders go to fifth, sixth, seventh, so on and so forth, they will eventually hit to high school, and with the, you know, the third grader class being not that small behind the fourth grade class, eventually, we could be approaching 6,600 high school kids, which would be very close to potentially needing a fourth high school if we don't do anything creative with scheduling and so on. Or look at an online high school. I mean, there's many ideas that we can deal with in the next few years to talk about that. But graphically, you know, we'll hit that kind of theoretical capacity in a couple of years, and we'll probably continue above that.
I have a feeling there's more flexibility with the older students.
I think there's more flexibility with that group.
To change schedules.
And so I think the group basically decided, high school's probably not a priority right now. Obviously, I think elementary would, from my perspective, and maybe the rest of the committee member, be a priority. Middle school, very close second, as a very high priority. So if we look at this kind of from a district-wide lens, next year, our projections are telling us it'll be the first year in, that I know of, that will be over 18,000 students, and that we would hit that 19,000 somewhere within that next generation by 2035, 36. I think the way we project is very conservative, again, because we're kind of holding the same number of kids born in 2017, assume that number out. We don't assume a lot of other growth from that. Just for example, five years ago, we were projecting enrollment of 16,856 on October 1st of the school year we're in, but we're actually at 17,932. So we were 1,000 off five years ago when we were projecting. So imagine 18 years off, which were 1,000 kids short three or four times. So imagine eighteen years off, which were a thousand kids short three or four times. We might be well under the twenties some.
I miss the awareness of all that, you know, because the experience that, and it's good that we've been sort of, I mean, then we have the actual experience alongside of that. If we, as we start to check into the future, we might not want to consider, you know, on average, each how, how up is it, one percent or two percent? Just say we actually need to factor a portion of that into our projections to make it closer to the reality that we actually, as long as there's reasonably, you know, committee continues to grow. Then I think we probably should be thinking about adding some other criteria to that projection to make sure that our number gets a little, reflects a little bit more what probably will actually happen.
That's what I'm trying to figure out as well.
Because I think it's more conservative to be that way. It's actually more conservative to be, you know, thinking that way. I mean, at this point, when you're thinking about capital expenditures, we don't want to run into a bump and all of a sudden, now we're behind the eight ball. I mean, that's why we're talking, if we don't do something, we will be behind the eight ball, but.
Just budget-wise, we've tried to be conservative to not object revenues and then set up expenditures that we can't afford for the long term.
But for facilities though, you know, maybe facilities, maybe we take a different, you know, approach, model that to...
I have a question. I'm not sure exactly how to phrase this, and, I mean, we got this information pretty late, so I haven't gone through it in great detail, but the ratio of students in John Adams compared to John Marshall, I mean, there's X number, X percentage of capacity at John Adams versus capacity at John Marshall. But John Marshall is also significantly larger for capacity than the other two high schools. So what I'm wondering is, what kind of ratio then do we have between, say, Willow Creek and Mayo and Kellogg and Century, since that's where most of those junior schools go?
High school and middle school use a different, MDEs a different number.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
So you can't make that straight comparison from a middle school to a high school.
So you're saying...
I'm just talking about capacity.
If our middle schools need to hold about a thousand students and they each feed into a high school, but the capacity at the high school JM is bigger than Century and could probably hold another three hundred students.
Right, because I was, I mean, when I was initially looking at this, I was thinking, okay, our middle, our elementary schools that are too big versus they go into a, say, John Adams, where John Adams is really overfull and then John Marshall isn't because John Marshall has significantly larger capacity than any of the other high schools. So they can, they can absorb some of that. So to me, the stumbling or the piece in the middle at John Adams is that John Adams is too small for its relative size to John Marshall, to its high school.
I see, exactly what you're saying. Well, if you think about to building a fourth large middle school, without building a fourth large high school, then you're going to have to split, you're going to have to redraw the middle school boundaries. And you might not, just because you go to Kellogg, be guaranteed you're going to Century. You might be going to a new middle school, you might be going to Willow Creek, I don't know. Have to sort that all out later.
Yeah, I mean, and some of us have been around plenty of long to have gone through multiple boundary adjustments. I mean, I think at one point, the goal was that all of the students at this middle school will all go to the same high school and not have a split student body.
That's how I was told, or visually, that's how it looks like our boundaries are set today.
Right, but that might have to change.
But that might have to change. It would have to change if you have a fourth middle school. So what's next, though? Kind of allude to what we're talking about with the boundary adjustments. We feel the highest priority to decrease some students would be at Bamber Valley, Elton Hills, Gibbs, and Jefferson. We feel like the four schools that could take some more students to bring them closer to that hundred and four percent marker would be Churchill, Hoover, Riverside, and Sunset Terrace. So I think our goal in the short term is by February thirteenth to bring kind of forward a plan to the public to give some feedback and comments on how to move some students out of Bamber, Elton, Gibbs, and Jefferson for September of twenty eighteen, bring up those other four schools.
Curious, were they primarily the most capacity, a hundred and thirty-two percent?
No, they weren't the highest. Elton is the highest, a hundred and fifty.
One other question I have, you had some information from MDEs to the number of acres that's necessary for elementary, middle school, and high school. Is there anything for acreage for a K eight school? Or is that simply defined as an elementary school and it operates under the elementary?
They do, and I don't know that number off the top of my head. I didn't write that one down for you, but that was in the manual, I did see that. It might be very similar to the elementary school, but I can verify it.
I mean, one of the things that Lincoln students really like when they're in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is that they're on the elementary start time. So, so it's been kind of regarded as an elementary, it's the majority of the day.
The only issue with that is, we're going to have to build a fairly large middle school to accommodate, so you're not coming back five years later saying we need to build another building to accommodate middle school kids. So I don't think you can get, because originally I was thinking, K eight myself, that the more I look at the numbers and look into the future, I don't think a K eight building is the option because you're going to have to make it so huge that you lose what Lincoln has. And what you can do, and I don't get ahead of you, John, and I'm sorry, is you can build a separate middle school and a separate elementary and have some shared space in between, some common areas that, so you don't have to build two of something, you can share it. But you're, I think to get us several years out, down the road, it's going to have to be fairly large to accommodate our growth. I just don't think you would have such a big building because then you need a larger, you need a larger elementary too, for the same reasons that you'd have a very large complex.
As I was going, I think it was exactly like you described, those real lines.
I'd like to comment too on something that Don said a few minutes ago, if there was a correlation between overcrowding and student learning. So I'm wondering if some of these schools were less crowded. We have to bring in a whole lot of extra resources in order to alleviate some of that. But if we had a, instead of having one giant middle school, which I think is not necessarily good for kids, in fact, that's my belief anyway, if you had two smaller schools, middle schools, without the extra people, human resources in order to combat some of the issues that are perhaps brought on by overcrowding, what would the difference in price be? And I know you have this number right at the top of your table. No, I mean, and I don't expect you to have an answer, but I think it's something worth, worth thinking about because we're talking about what we can do best with our dollars, but we absolutely have to talk about what is best for our students and then somehow have a happy meeting in the middle. I mean, we could build a school, an elementary school for three thousand students, but is that necessarily best for students?
I think our group looked at this briefly. I don't, I'm not so much worried about the construction costs if you build two smaller schools versus one large school.
It's the administrative costs.
It's the administrative, it's the overhead.
And that's why I was asking, if you reduce, if you reduce all the extra people that you might need at a large school that's, or just a plain large school, would that offset maybe having, you know, two smaller schools instead? So, you know, if you have ten administrators at a very large school, would you maybe have only five administrators at each of the smaller schools? I mean, I'm just using...
Might, might, might be putting two schools on one side. I think that's true, with several schools, but maybe two schools on one side, one in the middle, one in the elementary.
Right, but I was, I was thinking more in terms of the middle school or even the elementary school, I mean...
And, and John, so that caused me to ask Janie if it's okay. When there are larger schools or large student populations, not so much asking the direct impact upon learning or capacity to learn, but from a curriculum point of view, are there any studies that exist that would suggest either a pro or a con or a benefit or something that potentially is a cautionary nature in terms of facility size and learning capacity?
I would want to do some further research into it because it's been a while since I've looked at it. Most recently, we've been looking more at class size. There are some studies from a while ago that talks about kind of the size of the facility and the student feeling connected and feeling a part of it and some of that. But I certainly am not fully prepared to speak exactly to that, but I certainly could, I know expected where I would look and get some additional information for you on that. So I'd be happy to do that.
I mean, they're, they're all, I mean, I know I'm into the weeds, but, I mean, there are all kinds of philosophical things that you can do within a building to make it seem small. I mean, Jean, you might know the answer to this?
I do, actually.
Good, that's good to hear. When, when Century was built, wasn't it sort of with that design that you have your different houses? And that's more, I mean, that was the idea which didn't last a real long time?
Exactly, the idea was to have schools of four hundred students each. There would be four hundred kids assigned to each, whatever the thing was. And it was a wonderful idea, it was well researched. We did a lot of work determining what's the optimal size for school and determine smaller is better, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. Century was built on that model. It fell apart very quickly, the model did, not the school. But you always push up against that. Smaller schools are better, more for social relationship type things. I mean, that's where you get the real cloud because when you are at a little school where everybody teaching there knows you, where the principal knows you, you tend not to get lost. The problem is it's expensive. And so ultimately, you know, bigger sort of tends to trump smaller in terms of being more financially. It's cheaper, not better. And there were all, there still are all kinds of studies about what's the optimal number of students you should have in elementary, middle, high school, and smaller is always better. However, all kinds of studies have come out since then, ways to make sure that kids get those relationships, that they don't feel lost in a big space, and, and that can happen regardless of the size of school. There are also, as Mr. Munoz said, all kinds of models where there is, for instance, an elementary and a middle school, or a middle school and a high school, built on the same property, connected by gym space, cafeteria space, kitchen space, administrative space. And that, that's where it's to...
Be rural anywhere, and that's how a lot of cities do it.
Right.
It's just more economic.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the districts that are, that are struggling financially and closing buildings because you can't, in a, in a perfect world, we'd have tons of two-section kindergarten or two-section elementary. That's, you know, we just, last week did Longfellow's data presentation and, you know, somebody said, was it forty-five fifteen, or is it the computers, what is it? And they'll tell you, it's, we're so small that we can build relationships with the kids and their families. And in a perfect world where you have several money trees, that's the way to go. But unfortunately, districts don't have that luxury, so you, you build the size you need to build and then, like Jean said, you do what you can within that large building to do things, to build those relationships. But it's just, it's just financially, it's hard to run small buildings because four small buildings, they need an administrator each building, they need a clerk for each building. One big building, they need administrator, maybe one clerk. I mean, so it's just transportation. Now I'm dumping off four spots versus dumping up one building. It's just, unfortunately, it just, it just doesn't work very well to try to get too small. But I, in a perfect world, I would, I'd love to do that.
Well, and I've been arguing for presenting a small side, but there are advantages to having more sections in a school too. Because I'm thinking, supposing you have two sections of fourth grade and you have six kids, none of whom really should be in the same classroom together, and you have to figure out what kind of dynamic you want. You know, years ago, this building was K through three and Falwell was four through six with four sections up at Falwell. And it made for some, we were able to do some really interesting things with it. I mean, it worked out well.
In a perfect world, use your phrase, we'd probably be looking way out long-term when we start, buying massive, if you're going to consolidate the school district on campus. So you'd have everybody be going to a campus for, this is doing something going to this school, this school. They'd all be on campus, so you'd centralize administrate, you'd centralize all those functions on the campus and it would probably reduce costs a little longer. But that, that's expensive to, to think like that today. But it may, you know, make sense long-term to start because we're going to have some older buildings at some point that, say, are they actually, are we getting to a point where we're spending, putting, you know, good money after bad because the buildings are so old and eventually going to be, you know, it's not, it won't be a good investment to put money in those buildings. We should be building something new with changes in technology and building materials and all that and what have you, but...
That's a really good point because we didn't talk too much about that during the facilities. I mean, but we probably should have spent some time on age of existing facilities.
I think most of them are in really good shape because we have put a lot of indoor air quality and remodeling into them. I think I've heard somewhere the average building, school building is torn down about seventy-five years old. Obviously, there's probably some hundred-plus and some fifty-year-old buildings getting torn down, but I feel like we're in good shape to manage what we have for the foreseeable future.
I'm not suggesting our buildings aren't maintained, but at some point, it just costs more to maintain it, maintain an older structure like that than, you know, in New York, it's built to different standards today.
Well, just to use the example of the boiler at Golden Hill, which was seventy or eighty years old and there were no parts to fix it with, and then you're doing replacements.
Now, that was a building that was okay to be torn down. For a school district respective from the maintenance of the building, very, very costly.
One, just one of the other things that the, that the group talked a little bit about was in elementary schools and how I toured Franklin, I don't know, a couple of years ago. And the, what I came away with was that it seems like a majority of the students don't spend the majority of their time in one, in one, in their kind of home classroom anymore. They're, they're going to all sorts of different, different rooms, little small groups. And, and so I think if we're, you know, if we're building another elementary school, I think we need to, I think we need to expand our view on how we're, we're building it. And we're not going to be building, you know, the classroom for, you know, thirty students thinking they're going to be in there for the majority of the day because I don't, just from, just from what I, very limited knowledge, but it seems like that's not a, a big majority of the time. I think students are, are all together all day long anymore. So, again, if we're thinking about schools and thinking about building schools differently, does that then change the capacity? Does it then make it easier or harder? And I don't know the answer, to, to build the relationships and with, you know, with the students and the staff. And so I think all of those things, again, need to be, you know, thought about how, you know, how we're going to build the school, what's it going to look like, you know? So all those things go into it.
Great. Then the last short-term idea that we had, or obviously that we know that we're acting on is the Hoover Early Learning School. That opens in the fall of twenty eighteen, so that will relieve a little bit of pressure in a couple of our schools because it will free up some of those early childhood classrooms that could potentially be converted into kindergarten classrooms, first grade classrooms. Not in all cases, but there are a few of them that can now be repurposed back into other classrooms. Then the long-term solutions, obviously... Sorry. Long-term, we know that we're going to retire the debt on Century and Riverside schools. That'll be February one, twenty twenty. So two years and two days from now, we will be debt-free on those two buildings. You know, it is possible we could go out for a voter approval. Talk to you about that a little bit here for building construction funding in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen without really having a major tax impact. That would be a nice thing to do, I think. I think it's going to, it would pass a lot easier, obviously, if it's not a huge burden on taxpayers. And then, obviously, we wanted to walk away here a little bit with a sense of... And then, obviously, we wanted to walk away here a little bit with a sense of what would be the next steps for the process and the people of trying to make some decisions on where to build, what to build, timelines, things like that. I mean, the long-range planning committee is feeling, I think, pretty comfortable that we've done, we've ruled out some other options. We've kind of narrowed it down to probably a middle school and a elementary school. But where do we go from here next?
Is it really realistic to think that we can seek voter approval? I mean, are you assuming a referendum sometime this year or next year? Is that enough time?
Dr. Lipton will talk to us about that in a few minutes, about kind of how you gauge that public support.
I mean, in the past, I mean, I think for, for when Gibbs was built, I mean, there were quite a few community members who were involved in that. Who was here a million years ago.
Yeah, there's a year's worth of, a year's worth.
A year's worth or more of planning it and doing it right. And I, I just remember how tense the situation was when we did the operating referendum. I mean, I felt like we were just, the time was just really creeping up on us really, 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 really fast. And, I mean, I'm really happy it passed, but I think if we had maybe had more time, we might have been able to do a little bit more convincing of somebody than we do.
Well, I think the old basketball coach, I mean, one-point victory is just as good as, maybe it looked just as good as a twenty-point victory.
I agree, but until the final level.
The difference is, I can vote and wrap my arms around a physical structure and support that. Giving you money to pay people's salary.
That's different, yeah.
People have, they have problems with that. And, and it is, it's going to be a very short timeline, in my opinion, especially if we try to do it in eighteen. I'm more thinking nineteen myself, but.
That makes sense to me.
I mean, it, it's going to take time to educate people and do the work that we think we need to do. But Don will give us a little more insight on that. You want to get your last slide here?
Sure. Okay, where to build. So if we wanted to move forward building, just wanted to remind you that we do own three parcels of land that would work for elementary school buildings. We have a northwest parcel on Overland Drive. We call it the Schmidt Park property. It's sixteen acres. And that would be a location we could choose. There's a northeast parcel, that's on Twenty-first Street in the Century Hills neighborhood. That's thirteen acres. And then there's a southeast parcel on College Road by the Sports Dome. That's seventeen acres. So if you go back to that MDE guideline book, it says ten to fifteen acres is what you should shoot for, for an elementary school. So clearly, those three sites probably work just fine for an elementary school.
I thought the southeast one had a lot of wetland on it.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to do some more looking and digging into that if we wanted to. I, my personal opinion, just looking at where I think houses are going to be built, I think northwest is a more obvious location. I'm not sure that the Schmidt Park property is the obvious location, but I think a northwest address is probably where I would go. But also, there's probably some value in a southwest location too. So I'm not ruling out any quadrant at this point, I think we need to work on that.
Have we done any analysis, taken census, tracked data?
I really want to work closer.
And look at the age and see where our students are. You know, that might give us some guides as to, you know, for thinking northwest, you might find looking at data, it might, might end up being southwest. That might be an optimal, more optimal than, than northwest.
Right. And we have to remember too that we can redraw boundary lines. So we say, well, gosh, there's huge overcrowding at John Adams, so this has to be northwest. But once you start shifting stuff, maybe not so much.
Well, and then the other, I think one of the issues that happened at Gibbs and why it got so overcrowded right away is because we didn't really take into account all the lots that were, that are there. And so, I mean, that's another piece that, you know, we kind of goofed up the one time.
And where's the housing going to be?
Yeah, where, yeah, where's the housing going to be? And, you know, where, where are the lots? I mean, I think southeast is, I mean, it's growing too, so.
I think we definitely want to pull in the experts from Cowley City Planning, whatever, and help them.
There's new housing in every quad. There's new housing in every quad.
Well, isn't there, isn't there a apartment building that's being built near Gibbs, you know, too? I mean, nobody took that into account either. I mean, you know, there's only so many things that you might, might consider happening.
We actually did take that into account. I was on that task force. We looked at the plotted land and the in-process building plan. And it just grew faster than the projections.
Right.
But it was totally profitable.
Well, it's the right location. It's like, I think you're right, the problem is it grew, we built more houses out there faster than was anticipated.
Yeah, there's like seventeen hundred and some lots that were to be built on.
It's only chance, that's just, we're going to continue to roll out that way.
And then just a reminder, if we go down the path of a middle school, we do not have land for that. Or a high school, we do not have enough acres for that. So if middle school is deemed a priority, which I think it is, we do need to be shopping for some land. Inquire something and so. We kind of need some direction kind of on what is the priority, which quadrant, and then we need to go shop.
And then we might, but we might put up a sale of one or two of the lots too.
Correct.
To help, help offset the cost.
Because if the southeast one we can't sell, we have to.
Southeast, we do not, we are not allowed to sell that. That was gifted to us by Department of Natural Resources. So if it's not used for a public purpose, it reverts back to the state. But the other two, we do own those, we'd get cash out of them if we could sell them.
Northwest and just, what I know, just kind of seems to me, northwest or northeast is probably where we'll leave them anyway. You know, you've got to do, you've got to do the analysis to, to make, to make sure of that, so.
One thing to think about northwest is don't we, isn't some of that ending up in the Byron District?
Some of it is.
So even Rogers is going to the northwest, that doesn't mean it's in Rogers School District.
That's true too.
John, just a question about the acres needed. Does the, does the acreage have to be flat so that it's appropriate? It just has to be space?
Obviously, I think if it's too steep or if it has huge drop-offs, the ravines and stuff, that's probably very difficult. But if there's some rolling hills in there, I mean, you can definitely design around that. I think that includes it.
So for a high school, for a middle school, twenty, twenty-five to thirty-five acres, is there any kind of a standard of how much of that has to be playground-worthy or is it just?
Yes, that's actually defined in that same manual.
Yes, okay.
They give guidelines for how much outdoor space, indoor space. It's a pretty comprehensive, thick manual.
Thank you.
And the acres that is sighted in there does not include any wetlands, sewer, zoning easements or anything. That's just a buildable site. So that twenty-five to thirty-five acres for a K eight, and if you wanted to build an elementary with it, both of them together, then the guideline says you add those two acres together and that's how much acres you need. So you combine them together. So if you want to, what are we talking about, a middle school? Twenty-five to thirty-five and a elementary of ten to fifteen, then you're talking thirty-five to fifty acres is what you need.
And six plus a square foot, which is what.
We prefer to buy by the acre. We prefer to be buying land we're sold by the acre still now for the foot. Pricing by the square foot.
Unfortunately, most, unfortunately, most of the land is bought in the city limits around us now, you know, sold by a square foot.
And the amount of acreage available within our school district boundaries is very limited. And the buildable acreage for something that we want to do is limited. On the north end is the further out you get based on the public works issues.
Sixty-fifth street is kind of a drop-off for sewer, sanitary sewer right now. So you can't really go too far beyond sixty-fifth without putting a lot more cost in developing sanitary lines.
Actually, I think there's probably, if you talk to cities, you'll see there are pieces of constraints on, on infrastructure on every, every quadrant actually, because we're starting to stretch, you know. I know there's some natural places you would think that you'd put something there, but then you go to look in research to buy it and where you get the water, where the water has to come from. And you, and you see the city has no intention, is not in a position to be extending that utility for quite some number of years yet. All that stuff's going to go into the, into the, into the site. And we, yeah, so the sooner we get after it, the better. Because there's going to be a lot, a lot of issues that are going to have to be dealt with. And it'll take time to work through those, not the least of which is, you know, can we get infrastructure to the sites? And some will be more easier to do than others.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Mike, is this a good time to, the city, its comprehensive plan? I mean, no need of us continuing to, well, I don't want to say we're working in separate silos. That may not be the case. But can we advance working together to perhaps accomplish these common goals?
Yeah, I think that's what we have to do. We have, we haven't had any formal conversations with them about that because I think we just fairly recently come to the decision, the committee came to the decision that we need to probably have to build something. So now that's going to be one of our first partnerships, which is, which I don't anticipate that being a problem. We have a good relationship with them and we're in partnership with them right now with the transportation study that we're doing. And, but you're right, we definitely need to have them on board and, and, and work together on, on things.
I would say we are in partnership already with parks and rec. Yes, because they are very interested in buying land with us at the same time, depending where we buy it, and making part of it parkland. So we're working very, very closely with them and have some ideas as to what, where some land parcels might be that they're very interested in.
So what happens, yeah, I mean, are there fifty-acre parcels?
There are, there are some.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you think of farms, not too many in the middle of the city, but if you go on the edges.
So what, so what happens for, you know, so like a, so like Bloomington? I mean, for some reason, their, their student population really was growing. I don't know if it is or not, but, I mean, they're landlocked. There's not twenty-five acres, fifty acres for them to build a new school. So like, what happens in those? I, I'm just, I'm, what happens in those?
Do they continue to grow if they're landlocked? Is that at that point, are, are all the houses built and sold and, you know?
Well, I know, but what would happen if, you know, if it was like, you know, it's like the.
And the example, it's when you change from low-density housing to say medium or high-density housing in the same acreage.
Yeah, well.
They look, they might have to look at developing sites. I mean, sites where there's, sites that are, are just one where you redevelop. So you're tearing down all the commercial, you know, strips to, you know, to put, make public spaces. I mean, it does happen in metro, in metro areas.
I think, I mean, I think this is another, this is another legislative thing or maybe starting with MDE because right now, MDE has some pretty specific requirements for if you, for example, if you have retail below and then you're building your school up in terms of the size that you can have or leasing space and that kind of thing. So, I mean, I think MDE is going to have to actually maybe come in a little bit farther into the twenty-first century at some point in, in saying it has to be this way and it has always been this way. When, you know, like Mark said, once your density increases, then where are you going to put the kids? You're going to have to be somewhere else. But we're real far.
You're talking about building up as opposed to building out, take less space.
Okay. I think that was what I wanted to brief you on in capacities, enrollment. And then we wanted to briefly mention boundary changes, although I guess we kind of already did. But, you know, again, we're working on some ideas, we're working with our mapping software. We're trying to make some proposals and then get comfortable with them as cabinet before we put them out there to public. And expect we to do that in the next couple of weeks here.
One, one other question is, when we put something out to the public, are we going to say, well, what we really think, we're, we really are looking at is one elementary school? Or, I mean, it's possible that a well-informed citizens committee would come up with, well, we need to be building elementary school and something else. Or maybe you're going to have a couple of projects or a couple of buildings on a single referendum.
Well, you went two different directions on me here. You started off like a boundary and then you went to building. So we're going to basically follow the same format for the boundary justice we did in two thousand and twelve. And now we're having, not having multiple meetings. Just, we'll get a plan, we'll promote it. But we're also planning on sending out special invites to families that will be impacted by the proposed changes.
Okay, so you're talking about boundary?
Yes.
Okay, I was talking about.
While you start out saying.
Boundary adjustments will be, we're going to have to make some boundary adjustments by time before we build.
So we'll do that and then bring that to you on the twentieth, our, our recommendation, and then act on it in March. But one of the things, before we leave tonight, what we would need to know, I guess, we're not, we can't vote, but is there consensus that we need to pursue looking at additional facility or facilities? And then if that's the case, then how do you want to go about doing that? Do you, you want to do it internally? And then if you share it out to the community? Or do you want to have a task force that's staff and some community members? Part of a task force that looks at what to build, where you should build it? Not designing the building, but where you should build it and what you should build. And bring that recommendation from that task force to the board to have a discussion or if you want to just do it all internally. One of the things that we have made a connection with, I don't remember the company, Scott, who, there was a company that, well, can work with, does work with districts in how to engage the community in new facility work as well. So we would need a little guidance from, from the board on how you want us to move forward. Do you want us, right now it's been internally as far as that work? Or do you want us to bring in some community members to help with that process?
My feeling is, I mean, we talk a lot about community engagement and this seems to me to be an ideal time to really act on that and say, yes, your input is important and we do want you to be involved as opposed to just handing them something and say, well, here it is. We've done all the work internally. I mean, internally, of course, you might have some idea of where it needs to go or where you'd like to see it go. But I think we have to be open to community members suggesting maybe something that hasn't occurred to anybody at this point. So I would very much support a task force.
I completely concur with that because I think it'd be helpful if there, there's a lot of other institutions within a community that needs to grow as well. And maybe there's some non-traditional collaborations that could be, that could come from this. You see that in other cities where you have an art center with a school or, or something of the sort. I think we need to be open to thinking other than just your traditional set of rules.
Well, I guess I, we're not proposing that.
Correct. Just saying.
What I was going to say, because somebody made a comment over here. I, I think not only we do not want to build in the future our buildings to look like our buildings now. We're trying to change the way teaching and learning happens in our schools. So you have to design a facility to help accommodate that.
Right. What I'm saying is, you know, in other communities, sometimes there's other organizations that are physically located with the same, same building because they have more uses and after hours. So it's more operationally economical to do that when you have two organizations essentially using the same physical facilities. School during day, some other community-focused organization at night.
Well, that's certainly an idea, but, and that could be potentially, whether that comes internally or if the consensus is to invite and include the community for, that that could come from the community in terms of possible facilities, which I think, and was alluding to facility design and capacity to perhaps as a result of modular configuration, reconfigure into different configurations to accommodate, you know, an art class in the morning and perhaps a science lab in the afternoon. You know, just as, for instance, in many of our trade magazines, I say our MSBA, NSBA, there are many manufacturers out there, you know, already warehousing and showing, you know, the schools of the future, the types of furnishing capacity. So it's nothing we have to come, come up with necessarily. But your question was consensus, would you prefer us to work it internally or externally? Combination, I would, I would agree to perhaps a combination of the community and in-house expertise.
I think that, I think that makes sense. I think you're going to have to start the conversation with, you know, the internal thoughts, the internal thinking. with, you know, the internal thoughts, the internal thinking process and what I do, but then open it up to the public for, uh, for their view, review and consideration and, you know, listen to suggestions they might have, because you might, might some slight tweaks here or there that modify that, that these kind of issues can be dealt with before we actually go buy something and, you know, start design, start, start designing. I think that the quicker we get out the, the message that, that we have two things, two things that are going to happen in the next couple of years, and that is number one, we got to talk about boundary changes, boundary changes to buy us some time before we have to actually build new facilities, but we've come to the realization that we are going to have to build a new facility out in the next couple of years, so it'll be a two-part process in that we're going to talk about bound, boundary changes and then ultimately, you know, what we're going to build and where, where we might, where we might build it. I think we need to say, hey, this is coming, and then we figure out how do you engage the community, uh, in, in that, in that process. But I think it starts with big announcement, hey, we're going to be doing this and, you know, and then we'll have to figure some more thought, but I think you have to start, because you have the data, the information and stuff, you know, you got to start that, you got to have some internal start.
Well, and I, I mean, I think if we had a task of the school board, I think we really do need that 12 to 18 months lead time before we put anything before the public, because at this point, we're talking about, well, the schools are the future, it's sort of like the chicken and the egg, you know, does form follow function or does function follow form? So it, it doesn't make any, any sense to say, well, maybe we're going to build our school like this, and the people who are actually have some really creative ideas about education might say, but that's not what we would have chosen. So I think there has to be a lot of extended dialogue, and that takes time, because most people don't have 40 hours a week to devote to a building committee.
Yeah, I agree, that's why I said personally, I would not recommend 18, I recommend the fall, 19.
Right.
Right.
Now, as far as the task force, um, it has to be, it can't be such a large group because then you'll, you'll get nothing done.
Right.
But it also has to be people who are committed to, it's not a couple of meetings and you're done, it's, it's going to be a pretty intense process, but then whatever that group comes up with options, then you can share out to the larger community, kind of like we did in boundaries, here's a couple of options, get feedback, go back and work, make adjustments based on what you heard, roll it out there again, but I, I think my caution is not to make that task force too large, or we'll, we'll just spin our wheels so we won't get anything done.
I haven't been part of the last two facility task forces. The last, they've each been probably about 15 people, 15, 20 people made up of about half staff, half community members, and they're all, they're both guided by the district, that the, the committee essentially reacted with ideas or proposals to what the district was proposing, and it actually worked pretty well, and it actually worked real well.
The other consideration that the superintendent touched on, I'll give you a quick background, when we did our facility assessment, uh, we were interviewing various firms to do that, uh, part of their services also, the majority of them offered a service that would walk us through the process that you're describing as far as doing the community engagement meetings, guiding this whole process as a third party who has the expertise and professionalism to let you know what's reasonable, what isn't, based on our budget, based on our dynamics, based on our environment here in the district, and they can walk us through it, because I don't know if we have that expertise per se-
In-house.
-in-house, so it might be fairly beneficial, yeah, it might cost you $100,000, $200,000, but in a $70 million project, that's really-
So I'm, I'm going to note who the community members were in the last two task forces, they're generally folks like, say, Beneky or Knutson, they're people from within the trades who their job is to do this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you need someone that have expertise in what we're doing.
Yeah, the, the community provided that expertise, and I know enough folks in the community that they'd be more than willing to continue to do that again, they're very engaged.
The firm that I'm talking about is like an architectural firm that understands all those dynamics and puts all those pieces together from the Benekys and the Knutsons, can tell you, yes, this will look or no, it won't, but it's just another option to consider.
Well, I think, to my question, we have a good, uh, people on the committee who have qualified to add some real value to the, to the process, is one thing, and that, and I would kind of leave it to that committee at least, at, at initially to talk about, do they need some additional support, you know, consult, like you're, you're talking about coming in and add it, that would actually, you know, put it together and that, and I think that we can deal with that as a, as part of the process, but I would, I'd put the group together first and, and then raise those questions to them and then see what they feel comfortable and, what they feel comfortable with doing and, and, you know, find us a group, because, you know, Scott, you obviously will be on part of that committee and leading that, if we have some gaps there, at the time we feel we need some additional horsepower to pu, put it all together and stuff like you're suggesting, then maybe that's where we'll come back to us at, at that time.
I think that makes more sense than just go out and spending a hundred thousand dollars and start to find out we maybe didn't really need to spend a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, probably may, um, and no one's talking and just, you know, dropping a hundred grand just for the sake of doing so, uh, but, uh, Scott, um, I mean, you work in this area, you're the one who offered a suggestion, uh, what has been your experience in terms of the model, uh, that Mark has referenced, the two past, uh, task forces which have existed, um, what's been your experience? Is your recommendation implied based on that experience or just a, can you perhaps shed some additional insight?
I read through the 2012 task force book, I wasn't here at the time with the district, but, uh, and I support what you're saying as far as doing an initial startup. I guess what I need to explain better is, these companies that we interviewed not only guide you through the task force piece, but they also guide you through the referendum, they're selling it to the community, answering all the community questions as a third party out there that can confirm and support what the task force says as far as, what the task force says we need, and this third party can evaluate what the task force says and can verify because of their role as a professional organization, that yes, they are correct, this makes sense to us, that this is what we need to do in this community, and then they walk you through the referendum all the way through, do all the community engagement meetings, whatever else needs to be done, all the way to the end until you get, uh, the referendum out there and have that vote.
I guess I'm certainly open to all that, and I think, you know, it, 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 it makes sense to do, I think what we're really talking about, when is, when is the time to actually, you know, take action? I think we planted that seed with the committee then, just what you said, we got this group to help if we feel, the thing you bring to them, let's have them bring them back to us at that time, rather than just making a decision today to do it. Like, my guess is we're probably, we will, we'll do it, but I, I would defer to that com, that, that committee task force, but that's one of the first things on their list, what kind of help do they think they're going to, they need, and, you know, you can bring that up to them, and, and I think, I'm at least open to the idea of that, but I'd like to have that, you know, vetted by the group before we actually make the decision.
Through the last two task forces, all of it was, is just bringing the recommendations to the board, and then that was done. So a lot of the value add that you talked about was not part of that task force.
It happened later, it happened after.
Oh, it happened later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another thing, just, I think what we could maybe do ahead of all of that is maybe the first thing, that the task, one of the first things a task force could do would be to say, what have other districts done in terms of designing new buildings? I mean, they, you know, just see what else is out there in terms of getting some ideas, and they might come up with some really tremendously exciting kind of thing that would be a perfect fit that we could actually afford, so, you know, because I think it can be really hard to say, oh, well, you're on this task force, well, now what? But if they can have some, um-
Expertise, some added value added expertise.
Right, or just looking and saying, you know, what else, what else is out there?
I was playing duck as I get here. I believe Winona probably hired a architectural firm to, to look at all their, all their facilities and for some reason they came up with a $92 million price tag that I believe they supported with all sorts of information that they, in that community and whatever, and I believe it failed miserably.
Miserably.
So I, 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 I think we need to be, you know, and I'm sure there's another district, if, if I would know, that it, it worked perfectly. So I'm just saying that there's, I, I think if we, um, get our task force, if we get really good, solid people from Rochester who know us here, because I, I don't know, I still remember when, when we were doing our first strategic plan, uh, I don't know, one of the women who was helping us with our part was like, okay, Rochester's like a really different town. And so I think if we have people from here who know us, who kind of know how we all think here and, um, sometimes outsiders maybe don't quite get it, maybe they do, but-
Yeah, okay, I think we can, we'll see how it goes on that, that piece of it, and the benefits we have is we're not, we won't be closing these schools and asking for money to build another school, that, that helps.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's-
So without voting, the consensus, it seems like, move forward, get a, uh, task force organized with some community representation, um, so I guess what I would ask, we don't need to talk about it tonight, but if you have individuals that you think we should consider and then reach out to, if you could send those names to, to one of us, uh, then we can start moving forward on that piece of it. I think those were the things I wanted to accomplish tonight as far as how you want it, want us to move forward, and then I think we'll turn it back over to John, and you can have Don do his, his magic.
Absolutely. Wendy, if you could switch us out here and I'll bring Don up right here.
Yeah, relax, you meant a different Don, not-
John Lipto.
Yep, it'd be the one on surveys. So just continuing in the assumption that perhaps someday you want to go to the voters and, and decide, you know, vote yes, vote no, um, I wanted to just hear from Dr. Lipto about kind of the process and what are some of the services that can be done to gauge that community's support in advance so they do, don't run potentially a failed referendum, because I don't want to spend the district's money on failing because it costs money to do that, so rather it be successful upfront.
I'll turn it over to you.
Good luck. It is up there right now, and I don't know if the clicker's going to work, Wendy might be quick on her toes to move forward.
Should I try?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that you're going to get up and take a break when you need to, since it's an informal meeting?
Sure.
Well, it's good to be back in Rochester and thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about Springstead's role potentially in helping you during this planning process. And what I would be talking about tonight are approaches and methodology relating to gauging the, the mood, the support within the community, what the community likes, what the community doesn't like, has a way to collect data to help the administration and school board make decisions. So we're going to talk a little bit about a community survey, what, what it is, the different types of methodologies and features that you might hear about of other school districts, somebody mentioned Winona for instance, and they're going through a process right now, um, a little bit about timelines and cost and give some examples from the field. I think the last time we did a project here was 2014, 2014 or 15. For most of our clients, Springstead does this kind of work periodically. For some of the clients, we're on kind of an every four or five year schedule, whether there are buildings involved or not, or operating referendum or not. Others, it's more specific to a particular planning process and using this information to, you know, inform decisions. As you can see on this particular slide, um, the last one, um, talks about feasibility testing for operating technology or bond referendum, which obviously you've been talking about, but pretty much all of our studies also involve some qualitative testing, which we've done for you in the past as well. I won't get into the long version of this, but in terms of just a, a quick overview, there are multiple types of surveys that you'll hear about. A lot of times you'll just hear survey and you won't really know what they're doing or how it might be different than what we've done here in the past. One type is a census survey, and a census survey would be if I passed out a piece of paper to everybody around this table and said, who's going to win the Super Bowl Sunday? You put down your prediction and you turn them all back in again, and I could say 40% of the people at the table thought that New England was going to win. The great thing about a census survey, it's, it's 100% accurate, there's no margin of error, it is what it is, as young people say. The problem with it, of course, is it doesn't work too well with $100,000, $100,000, $100,000 people as compared to, you know, this size of group, so it's very limited in its use. There also are what are called probability samples or probabilities surveys. I'm not going to go through all of this information, you can look at it later and ask questions if you have them, but with a probability study, essentially, everybody in, in the universe that you want to get feedback from has a chance, essentially equal chance to participate, to be picked, uh, in that particular process. One example could be if we had an address for every single person living within the boundaries of the school district and mailed them all a questionnaire, that would be a probability sample. We're not going to get them all back, but we, everybody had a chance to do it, and that's what makes it probability. A non-probability would be if you designed, um, an instrument to get feedback, you put it on your website, and anybody that wanted to opt in and respond to your survey. It's non-probability because not everybody's going to know it's on your website, and everybody's going to have internet access, and so you, you can't normally take data from that, and if 50% of the people said yes building a middle school, you can't say that that is likely to represent the opinions of everybody within Rochester. It can be a, a nice engagement activity, however, and someone talked about engagement a little bit tonight. A lot of our larger clients in the last year or two have, have done, um, a probability survey or random sample variety, gotten that feedback back, and then once it came back, put the instrument on the website, so anyone else that wanted to could weigh in, so you can engage that way, you have to be very careful not to assume that the data you get from a non-probability actually means anything. Go ahead. This is just talking a little bit about the problems with those opt-in, uh, prob, non-probability surveys, go ahead. The random sample survey is what we've done in Rochester in the past and with about a dozen school districts in the last election cycle in Minnesota. It's the most common used, and a simple random sample is you start with a universe and the computer, you know, chooses randomly who gets picked to participate without doing any demographic controls. Don't worry about if too many women take it versus men or older people versus younger people, that would be a simple random sample survey. The disadvantages of that largely relate to the potential for oversampling populations. There's a company that, um, we compete with now and then for projects that routinely has about 40 or 45% of the sample are parents of school-aged children, uh, even though that demographic group is only 20% of the population. And if you have an administration and board making important expensive decisions, when you've doubled the, uh, number of parents who are surveyed, it can lead you to a false positive and some not very good outcomes.
Good question.
Yes?
Generally, who's the voting population for school referendums?
Generally, who's the voting population for school referendums? Does it coincide more with the random sampling or a targeted group?
It depends partly on the timing of your referendum. In November of 16, for instance, parents are going to have a much less of an impact on the outcome. In November 19, parents are going to have a greater impact. Also, in that odd year, people who are most likely to vote best, based on their past voting behavior are going to be overrepresented in the sample. There actually are a couple of slides to talk a little bit more.
That's an excellent point where it coincides with other elections.
Yep. So stratified random sample is what Springstead uses for its methodology. I think most of the professional people who work in this area would say that is the best approach. And with a stratified random sample, before we would do anything in Rochester in terms of interviewing people, we would first do a complete study of the demographics of the district. How many registered voters live here? How many are men? How many are women? How many are old? How many are young? How many are parents? How many are non-parents? How many live on the north side, south side? And any other demographic characteristics, it could be race, it could be past voting behavior, anything that's meaningful, we look at that. And then we give targets to the call center and say, we want 54% of the calls to go to women because we know that women represent 54% of the registered voters within the district. Go ahead. So enthralled, you've, there we go. Most of our projects involve from 200 to 400 completed interviews. Certainly in Rochester, we would recommend 400 based on your size. The, if your first reaction to that is that's not very many, the average survey that you hear about on Fox News or Public NPR or CNN, where they survey the country to find out what people think about something or other, is about 1,500 interviews out of about 300 million. So 400 is a substantial survey of this type. I talked about the demography. Most of our projects have about 35 probes or questions in the instrument. Again, there are other companies that will want to do 80, 85, 90 probes. But if you're interested in the research on that, which I'm not suggesting you are, there's overwhelming research that says if you keep people on the phone more than 12 or 13 minutes, the quality of your data deteriorates rapidly. Because by the time you get to question 57 or 62, they just want to get off the phone. So they're not really thinking about it. Go ahead. These next few slides emphasize the, what a stratified random sample survey is. And since I was coming to Rochester, I actually pulled your data from your 2015 study that we did. So you could, it would be meaningful to you beyond just looking at a graphic. So what you're seeing here is in the, kind of the gray color, that shows you the actual demography of registered voters living within the Rochester Public Schools attendance area in 2015, males versus females. So the gray bar is, is actual proportionate at that particular time. The burgundy bar, which is showing you the composition of the sample we interviewed when we did your study. So these next few slides will look similar to this. And basically, the way to think about it is if you're seeing a pretty good relationship between the actual demography in gray and who we interviewed in burgundy, means that we successfully controlled for that particular type, in this case, age. Go ahead. Same information on parent status. And as I suggested before, we're very, very careful not to oversample parents. I don't know if I've ever seen a client that had more than 25% of the registered voters were parents. And so, you know, if we do a study and 40% of the respondents are parents, it's not helping you, it's actually hurting you. This is the showing past voting behavior. So a five out of five means that that individual voted in five of the last five elections held within the jurisdiction, whether that be a mayor, school, or referendum, or national, whatever, they always come. Now, this is actually out of date. We're now going, how many out of nine? So now we're saying nine to nine, eight to nine, it's relative to that. And this is geography. So we want to make sure we're not just talking to people on the north side, you know, of Rochester versus some other area. So these slides basically show you the difference between a stratified random sample and a simple random sample. Go ahead. We always get asked, well, how can you do these things? With cell phones? And the answer is, we interview people on cell phones. And over the last couple of years, about half of the interviews are done on cell phones and about half are done on landlines. So it's not a problem. And because people shop and they buy things and they join things, those cellphone numbers are readily available to the public. This is talking a little bit about sample size and margin of error. Look at that 400 sample size, at that plus or minus 4.5% roughly. Basically, that's telling you that if the study says that 55% of the people like the idea of a new middle school, there's a 95% chance that the actual percentage is between about 51 and 59. It's whatever data point we end up with, plus or minus the margin of error.
And just a point, because we did use you for the outbreak on random. And, you know, the, the vote did come in within the margin of error and we set the size of that based on the, the results of the surveys. So at the end of the day, doing, I think that was the real reason we were, we were successful, even by the slimmest margins, it was well within.
It's about 1%, I think, in your case.
Yes.
So if we did that every time, we would be very happy, obviously. Okay? So that's what it would look like. In terms of the database that we draw from, that circle in the middle is called L2 Enhanced Demographic Voter Data. Living inside that are the complete voter registration records for everybody who is a registered voter living within the boundaries of the school district. And that data comes from the Secretary of State's office to L2 and then L2 to us when we do a project. The other circles around there are other databases that commonly are used in these studies. So the parent database over on the left in the little blue bubble, we get the name, address, and phone number of parents, school-aged kids. We merge it with the L2 data. And everything else around there is similar. The extent to which those databases exist, they're available, we pull them in. And the advantage of doing that at the end of the day is when you get your survey results back, we can tell you that 55% like the idea of a new middle school, but you can also then say, well, what did parents say? Because we merged the parent file in, we can break that up for you. What did people say who always vote? What did people say who are female, et cetera? So that's what you're seeing around the outside of some of those databases that we would merge. Again, all that's done before any interviews are done. Go ahead. The one that just popped in and read there called the predictive database. There are commercial databases that we purchase on some projects that also are added to that L2 Enhanced file to give us a little bit better idea of the demographic profile, getting back to maybe your comment earlier of who shows up and who's more likely to be supportive, everything else being equal. And that's where we, I'll, I'll get into more detail with that, not tonight, but another time if there's interest. This just gives you some of the demographics that we can show you from that L2 Enhanced file. We can say, what did people say who owned a home? What did people say who rented? What did people say who are more affluent, less affluent, more educated, less educated, et cetera? Because all of those characteristics are inside the database that we're drawing the sample from. So we can spit it back out and peel that onion back to the extent that that's interesting and helpful for it. So it's some examples from the field. Many of these we've used in Rochester. One is the Phi Delta Kappa question. You're the teacher for the day, give your local public schools a grade. That's been asked for almost 45 years in a national poll. And so by asking that locally, go ahead, we can compare what people said, you know, in Rochester, you know, compared to that national sample. And this is just breaking out A, B, C, D, again, give your local school a grade. Go ahead. And this is, this is using the same data and basically saying, what did people say in the school district, which is in the gold? What did people say in the national sample to the same exact question? And how do we compare? Go ahead. Sometimes we'll be asked, after people give the A or the D or the C, we do a follow-up question and say, what's, what's the main reason that you gave the grade you did? And when we do that, you can see the reported back, I think on the next slide. My kid's experience over on the right. So they're telling us, you know, why they gave A or why they gave the, et cetera. Go ahead. We can do something similar to, for financial management. I was, earlier today, I was in Amadei, they're doing a similar project. And one of their questions is, you know, you're the teacher for the day, give your, give us a grade A, B, C, D, F, on how we manage finances. So oftentimes, that's another qualitative question. This is a sample of something we did for a suburban district a number of years ago, where we basically said, on all of these different factors, you know, if you think we should spend more money in the future, about the same as we are now, or cut. And so over on the left, you're seeing all kinds of different things within the district. And the, is there another one right after this? Yep. You can see the, that gold bar is getting smaller on these. That means spend more. And the red bar is getting bigger on some of them, spend less. This was helping them with strategic planning. Go ahead. How well informed are you about what's going on within the school district? Go ahead. Where do you get your information about the Rochester Public Schools? What's the one that you rely on, that you trust? In this particular case, asking about where they got their information, we've done a study for, in 2016 and then again in 18. So they are able to compare how people responded to the identical question over time. And since we did a study here in '15, there will be some questions that will create the same opportunity if you move forward on this particular project. Go ahead. This is relevant more to some of the things you've been talking about, except for this one, they were talking about, you know, should they build a new middle school and do some remodeling somewhere else, or build it in elementary and do remodeling at the middle school? So giving some input on some options that were on the table. We've done a half a dozen studies in the last couple of years on open enrollment, basically calling people who live in the district that are choosing to go elsewhere, saying, why did you go? What would it take to get you back? Interviewing people who live somewhere else but are coming here. Why did you come? And districts that particularly have a negative, more kids leaving than coming can use this kind of data for planning. We sometimes split questions. Notice it says 15A, 15B. In this particular case, Cedar Falls, Iowa, and they wanted to invest $100 million or something in fixing up libraries. And at some point in the design of the survey, we talked them into splitting this particular question. So half of the people randomly heard the A question and half of them randomly heard the B question. And do you have a guess on which one got the greatest support?
Immediate.
Bad guess. Go ahead. Go ahead. Much stronger support for fixing up the libraries. Why is that?
Because that's what people call it.
We're not doing a survey of professional staff internally, talking to John Q. Public. And most people out there at the barber shop would.
It's a library.
It's a library, not a media center. And so this is an example of how sometimes it's helpful to do a split sample. Try some guidance on how to talk about your project. Go ahead. We also sometimes start with what appears to be a kind of a no-brainer statement. Our community needs to invest more in local public schools if we want all students to excel. Who would disagree with that? So if you go to the next slide, predictably, what is it, 90% or something? Think, yep, I agree with that. But then we pour that data into analytic software called Excel Stat. And we ask the computer to tell us, give me the demographic profile of the people who most agreed with that. One I remember from Rodensdale, with a project there, came back and said, women between 45 and whatever it was who lived in New Hope. So it, you know, it looks at demography by where people live, by gender, by age, by parent status, and gives you the characteristics of people who liked that idea the best, as well as the ones who disagreed the most. Go ahead. And this is just showing you that process of that Excel Stat analysis of looking at your demographic groups. Go ahead. In terms of testing for a project, something similar to what I've heard you talking about tonight with some new facilities potentially in the future, we use a three-benchmark test. We've done that hundreds of times and it's proved to be a good approach. And in a three-benchmark test, we start with what's called the uninformed benchmark. The school district, now this one's set up for an operating levy, if it was, you know, a bond proposal. The school district has been growing by an average of X percent per year. Many of her buildings are overcrowded. The board believes we're going to need to consider building one or more schools in the future, based on what you know, what you think about that idea. Now, it's called the uninformed benchmark because what you just heard come out of my mouth does not provide a lot of detail. Are you building an elementary school or a middle? Is it a big one, a little one? Is it in the south or the north? How much does it cost? A number of those details are available so far. Go ahead. And based on that, you get an initial response. Now, this would be a pretty positive response to an uninformed benchmark question. To get 60% support with, you know, not a lot of information would be very, very welcome. Go ahead. Then after getting that initial test, we work with the district to identify eight, 12, 15 more specific probes that provide more information and detail. So go ahead. And so the type of detail that might be, might be something like, you know, Rochester has grown by over 2,000 students in the last six years. Knowing that, would that make you more or less likely to be supportive of this building plan? Seven of our schools are at least 110% over capacity. Would that make you more or less likely? And so essentially, we're picking eight, 10, 12 relevant facts that the district thinks that the district thinks are compelling, and a reason to do the building plan. And in each case, we're saying, if you knew this, would you be more or less likely to be supportive? So the bigger the bar, the more positively a particular statement resonated. Go ahead. These are more of similar types of probes. You can see some of them got very, very high support, some not so much. Go ahead. Go ahead. So now, we've given context, detail, specifics. And so now we're coming back for the second benchmark, which is called the informed benchmark. And essentially, what we're doing here is saying, I've told you a little bit more about this project. Tell me again, what do you think? Go ahead. And in this particular case, you're seeing the initial one on the left. And then you're seeing how people responded after they had some information. Obviously, you want that bar, second bar to go north. It usually does, not always. And you'd also like it to go up more than the margin of error for the study. So if the margin of error for the study was four percent, and it goes up three percent, statistically, it's, it's not a meaningful change. Go ahead. Now, because we built that database at the beginning of multiple databases, we're able then to begin breaking things out for you as well. So in this particular case, we're showing you, after people got information, what did parents say, what did non-parents say? In terms of the level of support. Go ahead. What did women say compared to men? What did old people say compared to young people? And I should pause here just a second to make sure you're understanding. In the survey instrument on the phone, we're not asking people how old they are. We're not asking them if they have kids in the school or not. We already know that. So we're just reporting it back to you based on the database we drew the sample from.
Big Brother.
All public. What did people in the north say versus the people on the south? I did a project in Belle Plaine, you know, years ago, and they wanted to know, what do people think on this side of the river versus the other side of the river? So whatever geography is relevant to you, you can break that out. Go ahead. This one is the past voting behavior. So with our current L2 model that I talked about, we'd be looking at how many times they voted on the last nine elections. And we'd say, this is the support from people who pretty much always vote, as compared to people who vote about half the time, as compared to people who rarely vote, or new voters, who have only had one chance or two chances to vote. Go ahead. So we've gone through the uninformed benchmark, that was that first general question. Then we gave a bunch of information, asked people a second time, what did they think? Now we're getting to the numbers. And we typically will test three tax consequences, if you want to think of it that way. Usually, on an average-priced home, which in this community was one ninety at the time it was done. When we ask those, we do them in random order. So if we called your house, you might hear the two sixteen first, and then the one fifty-four. If you call somebody else's house, they might hear the two seventy-eight first, then the one fifty-four, the two sixteen. That's done to avoid having people sense you're taking them up the ladder, or down the ladder, and affect how they respond. Go ahead. And so this is what you get out of that third benchmark. The, in this particular case, with this study, half the people were asked about tax impacts on an average-priced home. The other half were asked tax impacts on a hundred and ninety thousand dollar home. Same thing, the average was one ninety. But we wanted to see if, you know, expressing it one way or the other made any difference in how people responded. And at least at the middle level and the upper level, as you can see, there is better support if you told them the one ninety number than if you didn't. Go ahead. And here, we're breaking it out by, by past voting behavior. So we looked at how people responded to those three tax rates. And then we're essentially saying, what did people say who pretty much always vote? As compared to people who hardly ever vote? As compared to people who are kind of fifty-fifty? And my eyes aren't good enough to see this, this far away. What's, what's the top one? Is that...
Left. It's left, I think.
That's the, okay. So the top bar are the people least likely to vote. And so when a district gets this kind of report back, it would be, you know, a sign of a little bit of caution, with your strong support is coming from the people least likely to get there. And then also, again, getting back to your comment, would depend on the time, the timing as well. Go ahead. Ultimately, what we're trying to do to help you with the feasibility survey is try to get a balance between what you think needs to be done, in terms of the purpose, and the cost of what you think needs to be done, as compared to what are the priorities of the people in the district and the willingness to pay. And obviously, when you can get back balance, everything else being equal, you've got a better chance of being happy on election day. We talked briefly earlier about, you know, if you call four hundred people and you design a good questionnaire, you know, is it really, is it really reliable? Is it helpful? This is showing a hundred percent of the surveys that we've done recently. And along the bottom, you can see the names of the districts. The ones over on the right half are all two thousand and seventeen projects. But what you're seeing is in the kind of orange, is what our survey predicted the yes vote to be. And in the blue, you're seeing what the actual yes vote was. And so, just with a quick reaction to it visually, you know, you can see that over time, it's been a pretty reliable instrument. The ones that missed the vote the most, one was Columbia Heights, where they did not do as well as the survey predicted. There were a lot of reasons for that. One of them was they had organized opposition led by a board member who resigned from the board after about a year of controversy about what was perceived to be anti-Muslim comments on his personal Facebook. And so, stuff happens. And in this particular case, that caused some serious problems. The other one that missed the most ironically is Springling Park, and they did much better than we predicted. And one of the reasons they did much better is they refunded, I think, a hundred and ten million dollar bond a couple of months before the election, saved a ton of money. And were able to tell people that even though the ballot says your taxes are going up a hundred bucks, they actually aren't because of this other refund.
But you're like paying school costs first.
Exactly.
And really advertising that a lot.
So, and anytime they do better than what we predicted, perfectly happen. But I think the, kind of the big picture here, it's been pretty good over time, in terms of reliability. Go ahead. Timelines. And I always tell super tenants or business managers I'm working with, if they contract for a project of this type, you need to anticipate eight to ten weeks from purchase order to when I'm back here presenting the results. So a lot of times, districts will say, you know, what month do we want to sit down and really chew on this stuff? And then just kind of back up from that enough to get the project done. I've heard some comments about twelve to fifteen months, fifteen to eighteen months, coming from somewhere around the table earlier. We prefer to have the client be taking twelve to eighteen months. Twelve on the short end, preferably fifteen to eighteen months. And our more sophisticated clients, who take that approach, will actually do a feasibility survey, similar to what I've been talking about, you know, fifteen months before they think they might be on the ballot, to get an initial lay of the land. What do people know? What do they understand? What do they like, what don't they like? To what extent do they understand enrollment or building needs? And then you can use the data to build your engagement process, to inform your task force, et cetera. Work hard for a year, building the foundation. And then about a month or six weeks before the board's going to say, I knew by second, you know, to do this, to do a short tracking survey. When I say short, I'm talking, you know, ten or twelve questions. Double checking, where are people at? What are they willing to pay before the board has to, you know, make that final decision? So we love that fifteen to eighteen month time period.
So just to put that in perspective, if we were doing a November nineteen election, that's making a decision, or trying to start this maybe around August of eighteen. So seven months from now, it could be the first survey out to the public, potentially.
It could, it could wait until August? Yep.
Wait, but even earlier would be okay?
Yeah. As long as you, you know, you're not going to do this contractually, but as long as you plan on doing that short tracking survey. Because you don't want fifteen months to go between data collection and when people vote, because stuff happens. The only referendum I lost in Montevideo, when I was superintendent there, was Black Monday happened the day before people voted. And those of you who are younger around the table may not know what that is. That was the biggest drop, one-day drop in the history of the stock market. Black Monday.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight. And we lost our bond referendum by fourteen votes. So you don't want, you know, fifteen months of stuff happening between data collection and when people vote. So best practice from my point of view is do that feasibility survey early, fifteen months ahead of time. Use it to do your community engagement, your planning, guide your work. And then do that quick, quick, short one, as I said, four to six weeks before you pull the trigger. I will tell you, a district that's always used that approach is Alexandria. And they did their hundred and ten million dollar high school, which is an amazing building. They used that approach. And all their planning in terms of tax, taxation, and building their mortgage was based on the first study. When they did the tracking study, we found that the tax acceptance had dropped by seventy-five dollars on the average-priced home. So it was worse. And so, we redid the whole mortgage, if you will. Brought the tax impact, you know, back to what that tracking survey said it needed to be. And I think they won fifty-four, forty-six or something. You could speculate that without the tracking survey, they're making decisions on full data and maybe they lose. So that's the thing. Are we done? Okay. The costs vary based on a number of things. It's more expensive to call five hundred people than two hundred people. It's more expensive to be on the phone for twenty minutes than twelve minutes. And there also are variable expenses, you know, related to the cost of data. But having said all that, in suburban districts, that you have seen on that other graph, in districts like Rochester, you know, most of the projects are in the twenty to twenty-five, twenty-six dollar range once you make all those decisions. Another variable, I don't know if I have that on there or not, relates to languages. Most of our projects are English-only. If you add Spanish, it costs more. And if you get into other languages, it costs a lot more. So some districts have chosen to limit it to English and Spanish, for example. And then after the survey's done, do multiple focus groups with other communities, with other languages. So they're heard, they're engaged. So those are some of the variables that affect the cost.
So your L2 information would perhaps reflect what that particular individual's demographic realities are? And you may then very well suggest that might be one of the however many points that should be factored into the survey.
But this depends on the nature of the community.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, I, up until six months ago, I lived in Montevideo. And, you know, that's ninety-five percent Caucasian. No, it's not an issue there. Other districts, it is an issue. So that's part of the conversation we have with the client at the beginning, to figure out what makes sense in a particular situation. So, I guess in conclusion, we're very quickly, and I'll see if there are questions. We've had good success working with our clients through feasibility study early on, providing data for planning, providing time for engagement, and then coming back and doing, as I said, that short tracking survey closer to decision time. And when that can play out over that, you know, fifteen to eighteen months, that's a very, very good timeline for planning. That chart that was showing you the, the relationship between what the survey predicted and what happened, I think sixteen out of eighteen are going to pass. Did that pass because they did a survey with us? I'm not helped saying that. Is that part of the equation? I would say definitely, it's an important part of the equation. So I'll stop there. And any questions about what I went through? I'd be happy to respond.
Well, generally speaking, are there any correlations between the work of the task force and the work of the, let's say, Springs Day?
Definitely. We typically would be not only working very closely with the district, but working very closely with the architect, with the construction manager, whoever was facilitating, you know, a task force. One of the cautions, from my experience over time, I absolutely think it's a great idea to evolve community and the task force. I would always recommend that. But I also would say that one of the pitfalls to be careful about is if you get twenty-five people who, you know, work for six, eight months, they essentially drink the Kool-Aid. You know, they're the ones that are touring the buildings, and seeing overcrowding, or asbestos that needs to be removed, or, you know, fill in the blank. They're seeing these conditions. They're learning. They're understanding the relationship between the quality of the school and how that supports academics. And on building projects, oftentimes, what happens is they come out of that process and recommend a ninety-two million dollar project. Who's picked that number on the group?
Couldn't.
And so now the board has this blue-ribbon task force of thirty people who are recommending this. And it's hard to say no, and it's hard to pull it back. And so, one of the things to be cautious of is is not to let the thing get reasonably large, because the other ninety-eight percent of the community was not on the task force.
This, this sort of, just then, their task force, I think, are a little bit different than what you're suggesting there. To get, having been on the last two, we didn't come up with, say, an architectural suggested plan, or even a cost a dollar mark. It was, like, if you look at the one of yours, yes, go sell skyline, yes, do something with early childhood development, yes, go sell disability, yes, there needs to be an elementary school addition in this size of town. But just to, you go figure out where the building should be, it looks like. So there's never a dollar mark suggested. It was just a more, like a strategic plan directive.
That's a much better approach. And again, I wasn't commenting on your process, but just something to be careful of.
We've had a good part of my experience.
Other questions?
I have a question. So, in terms of forming the questions that are asked, how does that work? I mean, do you come up with this, the questions? Can the task force come up with the questions, or is it some combination of the two? Because you don't live here, and perhaps the people in the task force might have a little bit better feel for how a question might be worded in terms of our community or is that not an issue?
It has not been an issue. I've probably been involved in close to 500 studies like this over time, and if I gave you all 500 questionnaires, you would not find two of them that were the same. So, once we've contracted to do the project, we send the district a request for background information, basically saying, we'll send us information about what's going on, what's relevant, what's the board looking at that's, you know, moving the board towards some kind of a building project, enrollment projections, whatever the case may be. Once we've got the background information, then we, we go through that first, and then we schedule a meeting with the appropriate administrative staff, and sit down with them like I did in Montevideo today for an hour and a half, saying, well, what about this? What about this? Are you going to do that? I don't understand. Here you say stamina, here you say steam. It's basically a back and a forth conversation where we get more detailed context, clarification. Once that has taken place, we produce a first draft of the questionnaire. That goes to the superintendent, and then the superintendent processes that in any way that she or he deems as appropriate, which could include sharing that first draft with the task force to get some feedback, have to figure out what role the board's going to play. So, we get feedback on that, we do draft two, we get more feedback, we do draft three. Typically, it takes three, four, five drafts before we're ready to go. So, everyone is unique to the specific needs of the district.
The other question I had was, are we required to have a, a building referendum in November? Because there are some referenda that are required in November, and they can only be in November and only on this date. And if I recall correctly, this project would not fall, fall under those constraints. Am I right or not?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think one of the things that would be most valuable for me is trying to plan out the finances. So, we've got this payoff date, these other schools coming on February 1, 2020, which means we, our taxpayers pay those taxes in the calendar year 2019, which means our school board sets the last levy for these in December of 2018, so 11 months from now, nine, 10 months from now. If we miss the opportunity to go out for a vote in 2019, and our taxes actually go down, do we have a harder time than selling a vote in 2020 or 2021? Because now we have a, it's going to look like more of a tax increase compared to if we could try to time it out in 2019 and say, this vote even steven here, no tax impact.
That's much too much complexity for tonight, I'm sure. I would just comment briefly, the, I had a, I had a journal article published by the American Association of School Administrators in the December issue, December 17. It basically talked about the North Branch case study. One minute or less, I'll just tell you that North Branch did a no-tax increase bond referendum of, I think, 72 million in May of 16, and lost zero tax impact. They had not done the feasibility survey because they didn't think they needed to because it was a no-tax increase. After they lost, they had to do a post-election survey to find out why they lost. And among other things, when we asked people if they knew it was no-tax increase, like 70% said yes. And we asked them if that influenced their vote, about 70% said no. So, they were on, operating on a false assumption with their communications. But at any rate, because they had debt falling off, just like John was talking about, they had a one-time opportunity to put it on the ballot as a no-tax. Because they lost, they came back a year later and did election in May of 17, increased the amount from 72 million to 80 million. The tax impact went from zero to $108 average price home that they won. So, if you find that interesting, you can go to the website and download the article.
The communications that folks needed.
There were lots of reasons that happened, but the timing is important, and the opportunity to fund new building projects as other debt is dropping off, it's usually a one-time opportunity and a great opportunity to get some stuff done with little or no tax impact. Stacy Childers from our office obviously has been working closely with John to get that fine tuned so you understand what the opportunity is and the timing.
If you could pull up the next one, that's kind of what I wanted to link right into unless there are any more questions of Don, just to show you kind of how the numbers do play out if we were to do that.
Can you be for that?
All right.
Thanks, Don. I'll head north. Thank you. I'll grab your lighting.
Get that up on the screen. The first one in there. Just to give a summary where we stand with total indebtedness, 111.7 million at the end of last school year. We borrowed 12.1 million dollars in this current school year to fund the Hoover Early Learning School addition and Hoover Elementary School renovation. We pay off 19.6 million dollars two days from now, because our bond payments are due February 1st, and we will end the year, unless we borrow anything else, 104.1 million in debt on January 13th. If you look at what we pay on a normal basis, our debt payments are primarily funded through the property tax levy, $13 million are our payments this year, 13.1 million next year, 13.1 million the year after. So, we have, we've tried to always schedule our debts so it's pretty level, pretty much the same all the time. Sometimes it goes up if we issue something new. Century Riverside, again, I can keep saying this, I think at every public meeting, will be paid off on February 1, 2020, and our payments will drop, 1.8 million dollars if we don't borrow anything else, if we don't do some sort of building project or, you know, have a vote on that by basically November of 2019, taxes will go down 1.8 million dollars. So, we ran a couple of scenarios to say, you know, you are in a position because of this kind of one-time opportunity within the next six to 18 months to seek a building bond referendum, and the number we came up with was 57.9 million dollars. So, you borrow about 57.9 million and not really have a taxpayer impact because of that. So, here's four options on how that can play out. An elementary school, option one, just standalone elementary school building, roughly 31.4 million dollars. We obviously have not engaged any architects, engineers, it's just a rough, took 290 dollars a square foot, some land, so on and so forth. That would actually probably cause a taxpayer decrease because it's under the 57.9. So, we've got that. Option two, if we said, maybe we should do an elementary school, and we should add on to some other schools, you know, there are some small elementary schools, maybe we should add on and make them bigger elementary schools. If you structured it at that 57.9 million dollar number, again, no taxpayer increase on option two. Option three, middle school only, rough, rough numbers, 72.6 million might be the number there. This would result in a taxpayer increase of $10 per year on a $100,000 home. It's a very, very minimal tax increase because of the other debt that's falling off at the same time.
And that could change depending on if the tax base continues to shift.
Sure, absolutely. And then, option four, what if we went out for an elementary and a middle school? So, you take that 32 million on one, the 70 million on the other, and you need to borrow 102.5 million dollars. Could be a taxpayer increase of $26 per year. So, again, relatively speaking, if an average home is paying around $800 a year, you tack on another 26. We're not talking a lot of money, but I think Don did emphasize the importance of making sure we track with our community and they don't vote it down just because they feel it's not needed or don't like it.
Well, I think, I mean, we've had this conversation too. The other issue is if city and county taxes are going up, this is the only thing they can say no to.
Exactly.
Even if it's, even if it's only 15 cents, you know, it's like.
I'm not paying for one more thing.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So, I think the messaging has, to me, it's really well-developed.
At least, I feel very happy on the dollars and cents side that this, this does not look like a huge burden. Now, it's easy for me to say that, but relatively speaking, we're not going out and asking for thousands of dollars per year to build a new school.
So, what would happen if, you know, if we didn't, if we didn't mean, you know, kind of the timing just didn't work?
Yeah, yeah, doesn't work, yeah.
And so, then is it for the last, for the $100 million one? Is it then like, is it 52?
Yeah, so, so, so something, yeah, we'll probably be sitting here setting the levy in the fall of 2019 and saying, hey, good news, taxes are going down $10 a year on an average price home. Good news. And then next year, we're going out to vote and saying, you know, your taxes are going to go up $30, $40, whatever the numbers play out, but the increase would look larger if you missed the fall of 19 election.
Well, and I think the other thing that's important too is for us to just, and I know MSBA is going to be doing this, is to keep lobbying the legislature to change that language on the ballot, which says your taxes are going to go up even if they're not. I think that's.
Yeah, you're referring to basically you have to write it with certain words.
Yes.
Then you have to try and explain why that, those words are the legal language, but here's the reality of the.
But a lot of people, they will see tax.
Right, because they haven't paid attention to our words, yeah.
Exactly, so, which is why I would be much more comfortable with an 18-month plan.
Three times.
Yeah.
I tell you, if it went another year of 2020, the federal elections, don't have the numbers exactly, but GADO management, that's generally not good. You're right.
Well, better than often.
That's, that's all I have for tonight.
We got one more slide.
Oh, one more. This is just the assumptions of what went into those financings, so just, the rates are what they are today, and we add an extra half percent interest, not knowing where interest rates are going to go, but those assumptions assume, you know, paying it off over 20 years. You can go 25, 30 years, make the payment cheaper, but you pay more interest in the long run, same as getting a mortgage on your house. We have to make those tax decisions. And we assume our credit rating does not decrease, it remains good if it is. Okay?
Any questions?
So, before we close, just.
Before we close.
Make sure I have an understanding. We will, submit any names you recommend for the task force? The task force charge will be to look, come up to speed on our facility needs, what do we need to build, where should we build it? They're not designed in the building, they're going to help us decide what to build and where we should build it, and maybe have some input on how we may, obviously, we'd have to look at boundaries, try to, in determining where you want to build. So, we'll do that. We, like I said, will have, I think it's the 13th, John said, that we will have a community meeting, and I think it's here in the boardroom at 6 o'clock. But at that time, we will have a recommendation on how we should adjust the boundaries to impact the schools that we showed you earlier this evening. We'll get input from the, those who attend, we plan on inviting, a special invite to those families who will be impacted by our suggested changes. It'll be open to everybody, but we're, we thought it's important to inform and invite those who will be impacted by the changes. We'll use the same process that we used in 2012, take that information input, potentially make some adjustments, and then on the February 20th, bring a recommendation to the board, brief you, and then vote on that in the first March board meeting. We think timing-wise, that, that should be fine, it gives still, gives parents a few months to decide, you know, same pack to me, do I want to do something differently? In 2012, when we did make a few little tweaks to the boundaries, I think we impacted about 200 students. This one will be a little bit more than that, we anticipate, just because of the amount of schools that we're going to try to take from and then feed them into other schools. So, that's what we have. Did I, are we all on the same page as far as what we're to do moving forward?
I have two questions. My assumption is for this task force, we're going to have some very specific, fairly limited questions, so that when they're asked to be involved, it's very clear exactly what their authority is.
Right.
And my second question is, I'm assuming it would be better that we not invite anyone to be in the task force until after the short-term boundary meeting happens?
Yes.
Because we want to make sure that those folks don't get confused about.
Good point, good point. But in the meantime, send us any names that you would recommend and.
I'll send your name and mark.
And that, I guess that's a question I probably should have asked earlier, is there, is there, you think there should, should there be board representation on that committee? If you do, my recommendation would be to look at our long-range facility committee members and have one of those individuals be on, just because they kind of been on board since last year or?
Well, it does, what is the same policy? I mean, is, is a, is a task force, how should, who are the school board members? I think it would be really.
If it's a board task force, I see this as a superintendent's task force, so there's no guidelines whatsoever.
I think the last two task forces have not had school board members on it. I'm not saying I can't, but I don't, I don't recall school board members on the last two.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying you have to, but I'm just saying that if that's what you want, to me, it makes sense to have somebody that's been.
I, I would like to, actually.
So, and I guess you don't have to decide that now, but something to think about if, if you want to have board representation on that.
In 2012, you did not.
Yeah.
Mark was on there, but at that time, you were not a school board member yet, so, yeah, and it looks like there's maybe close to 10 new community members and then maybe about 10 staff members. Let's raise a couple.
No, I'm a M S B.
Okay. This board meeting is adjourned at 8:00 P. M.